Welcome to the Norton Media Center, our home for the debate this evening for the office of select board member at the April 29, 2023 election. My name is Dinah O'Brien and I will be your moderator. We are here with Ms. Denise Luciano and Mr. Michael Tool, both seeking a seat on the select board. Both candidates have enthusiastically agreed to debate this evening and have agreed on the following rules. Each candidate will be given an opening and closing statement, the order of which has been determined by a coin toss. The winner of the coin toss, Ms. Luciano, shall deliver the first opening statement and the loser of the coin toss, Mr. Tool, shall determine the order of the closing statements. Each statement will be limited to no more than three minutes per candidate. With community input, several questions have been composed and will be asked of each candidate. The questions have not been shared with the candidate prior to the opening of this debate and each candidate will have three minutes to comment on the question and one minute for rebuttals. Time will be kept by the moderator and a card will be held up 15 seconds prior to the end of turn. While we are looking forward to a spirited debate, no personal attacks or negative statements concerning candidates will be tolerated. If these should arise, I will step in to end the conversation. So welcome and here we go. The first question goes to Ms. Luciano.
Opening statement.
Oh, opening statement, that's right. Yes, please. Ms. Luciano.
Hi, I'm Denise Luciano. I want to first thank you Dinah for agreeing to moderate. Thank you, Michael, for agreeing to debate this evening and thank you Jason and Shane in Norton Media Center for taping this evening. As a candidate for the select board, I will be open. Strength comes from diversity of thoughts and opinions and I always welcome and will be willing to listen to all people's opinions. I'll be transparent. Any conversations having to do with select board items that come before the select board will be discussed in front of the select board, open to the public, not behind doors. I'm here for you. No aspirations other than to serve our community, the town of Norton, which I love very much. I'll inspire. I want to see more people get involved in our town government, whether that be volunteering in some capacity or just becoming more involved in our town politics and understanding what's going on in our community and being able to vote more effectively. I'll be, I bring experience. I've volunteered in various capacities throughout the town, starting when my children were very young, in the schools and sports, volunteering in the town food pantry, volunteering in the Economic Development Committee and volunteering as a member of elected charter commission. I also work as a senior contract manager, so I am accustomed to negotiating and coming to the table with people with different diverse opinions and being able to find a solution. I respect the experts. They understand the subject matter better than anyone else and I will respect their opinions on the select board. I will work to understand all sides of a matter. So I will research subject matters as they come before the select board and try to understand all sides and opinions to make the best, most well-informed decision for the town of Norton. I'll be reasonable. I'll own my own mistakes if I make any and I'll correct it. And so I hope that you will consider me as a select board candidate and vote for me on April 29. Thank you.
Mr. Tool.
Madam Moderator, Ms. Luciano, the Media Center and finally the residents of Norton. Thank you and thank you again for electing me to serve on the select board. For the last three years, it's been the honor of my life. It is actually, it's one of the things that I found in representing residents is one of the closest thing to a calling that I have. For more personal information or professional information on my volunteer experience, for just more information about my candidacy, I'd encourage you to check out votetool.com. Three years ago, I asked you for your vote with a very aggressive agenda and since that time, this town has achieved so much. We've completed a doublid and implemented a strategic master, I'm sorry, a strategic town strategic master plan. We opened our first cannabis store, which we are now receiving tax revenues. We opened two new wells that will increase the flow of water and improve our town water. And we funded and started the largest infrastructure project in our town with a new town hall, a new senior center and a new track project. But there's still work to be done and this is why I'm asking you to send me back for another three years to the select board. If reelected, I have four focuses. First, to expand residential services such as trash pickup. Second, to create a select board prioritization process that will give focus to the town budget. I want to continue to implement the town strategic master plan, which will guide this town for the next 20 years. And then, and then finally, I want to identify a new economic focus zone for the town. This will require working with several boards and will usher in a new stage of growth within the town. Besides my vision and love for the town, there are four key things that separate me and my opponent. Commitment. I'm available and invisible to the town, which is a requirement for a select board member. Perseverance. I set goals and I push to reach those goals even as a select board member and in my personal life. Creativity. I've used this to think of and solve problems, try to think outside the box. And finally, experience. Currently, I am the senior person on the select board and while time itself does not qualify me, my personal experience and my efforts to ensure there are no gaps of experience within the select board, reaching out to other select board, previous select board members and ensuring a continuity. Tonight, I hope to define the differences between me and my opponent and ultimately achieve your vote on April 29. Thank you. You're my time.
Thank you. According to the coin toss, Ms. Luciano has the first question, so I will address this to you.
Okay.
Most people seem to agree that residential taxpayers need a break. That means bringing in more commercial industrial businesses to help relieve the burden. What is your position on supporting locally owned businesses in Norton while at the same time attracting commercial industrial tax relief to the residential homeowner or taxpayer? What are some of the specific ways in which you will try to achieve this and why do you think your initiatives will be more successful than those that have been attempted in the past?
Thank you for the question, Dinah. So as a member of Economic Development Committee, this is something that actually is very near and dear to me. When I was a member, I should say, I'm no longer a member, but I was an instrumental part of drafting the bylaws for the marijuana retail spaces that we currently have coming into town. We need to continue to move forward with additional businesses in town in that marijuana retail space as well as some of the manufacturing and cultivation for marijuana to help bring needed revenue to town. In addition, I think that the Leonard Street development has some new buildings coming in, has some more developments still to happen and I encourage that to continue to go on. I also am very supportive of the local businesses in town. As part of the EDC, we set up a database of the local businesses to be able to reach out and contact them and hopefully that will continue to go on. Some of those reach outs and as well, I support them and frequent them anytime I'm in town and hashtag Norton for business, Norton for biz. I use that hashtag when I do go to those businesses to try to draw attention to those businesses in town. I do think that the town center that has been developed, the walking town center that we have been trying to develop needs to continue to be developed and be a focus of our attention and that we need to continue to get businesses that will help to facilitate that walkable environment that we're hoping to seek in the center of town. I think we need to continue to focus on Leonard Street developments. We need to continue in focusing on expanding marijuana businesses and I think that will help us to increase our tax base and relieve some of the burden on the taxpayers and homeowners.
Thank you. Mr. Tool. Most people seem to agree that the residential taxpayer needs a break. That means bringing in more commercial industrial businesses to help relieve that burden. What is your position on supporting locally owned businesses in Norton while at the same time attracting commercial industrial taxes to relieve the residential homeowner slash taxpayer? What are specific ways in which you would try to achieve this and why do you think your initiatives will be more successful than those that have been attempted in the past?
Thank you for the question. I think this is one of the most crucial parts of the town today is looking to how to grow business. We've done some great things over the last few years and going back even more prior to three years, I was the first person to be reappointed to the Economic Development Commission, which was the IDC, now is the EDC. And it's something that I take and I recognize the balance of residential responsibility and business responsibility in our tax burden. And it's one of the reasons as a select board member, I looked and really evaluated where we were. Ideally, we want to be about 80/20 mix, 80% commercial, 20, I'm sorry, 80% residential, 20% commercial. We were just shy of that, but I felt that if we were at a point where we could split the tax rate and shift it a little bit more. And while that puts a little more burden on the business, it's a balance between the residence and the business to that. I think there are other ways we can grow business in town. One of the things I talked about in my opening statement was a new economic industrial zone. We have to start looking at where our next big business is going to happen. And I think that it goes beyond just the state, just the town. We have to look at the state and find out what resources we can use within the economic development of the state. We're excited to have a new planner, Maria De La Fuentez. She's doing a great job and she's tackling these things. But another thing that we're doing is we're putting some ownership on the businesses in town to create a Norton Business Association. That Norton Business Association will bring ownership and build small businesses up, bring this whole process together of the town working in its, with its planner and the state and small businesses, attracting new businesses to the town. Therefore, it will balance out the tax burden, both to the resident, which is just who's burdened by the debt exclusions, and businesses in town. So it really is truly a balancing game. I think the economic, the master plan is really the playbook for the next 20 years regarding this. You know, one of the areas that we can, Norton, you know, people try to compare us to Mansfield or other towns like that. One of the things we have to work on what our strengths are, attracting businesses and residents. And that could be, it could be environmental tourism. We have great trails that are not defined. We have, this is all ties into the businesses and supporting businesses and attracting small businesses and larger businesses to the town. You're my time.
Thank you. Ms. Luciano, would you care to rebut?
Yeah, I also was one of the original members of the IDC when it was first formed and I do remember working with you, Michael, in the IDC. I'm sure that you remember the work that I put into drafting the bylaws for the marijuana retail and the efforts that we all put into the database that we created. One of the other things I think we can do, particularly for the small businesses in town, is to work on and look at our bylaws and see if we can simplify things for them. Sometimes I feel like we get bogged down in the weeds and make things very challenging and difficult unnecessarily for the small businesses. So I'd like to take a look at that and I think the EDC would be instrumental in that as well as the new planner as well.
Ms. Luciano did excellent job. She does have attention to detail specifically on items such as the bylaws. I think, this is where one of the things that I think will differ a little bit though, I don't think we policy this to success. I think one of the jobs of the EDC should be out there marketing the town. You know, we're one of the only towns on 495 that have two exits. We have a lot of great things going on in this town. We have a new, like I said, new planner. We have a good plan. We're at the beginning stages of it and I think we could do more just to promote, market and attract businesses to the town. And I don't think it's just done by changing bylaws and this. I think that's one component, but that is not what's going to attract businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tool, this question is for you. The town has invested two years of staff time, community feedback and commitment to the current master plan, which you referenced. Unfortunately, past experiences indicate that these planning documents are greeted with enthusiasm then languish on a shelf. If elected, what steps will you take to ensure this document becomes the basis for Norton's future?
Thank you again. So I spoke about the master plan. I've been, before I was even elected, before it was finished, I was excited about this document. We, our last master plan goes back to the early 90s and we went several, like two decades without a master plan. I think this, every town needs a master plan and I think what it does is it helps us to find different areas of the towns where we can find success. Implementing it though, is one of the most important parts. And I think we need to really task, you know, work with the planner to task, to break that down. And within the planning office, we can decide what areas stay within that office or other conservation or other departments and really just have almost a task force of rolling out the master plan. The great thing is it has a 20-year life typically, but we can always add on to it. And I think that's one of the things, this has to become a living document within our town and it really will define attracting new businesses, attracting residents. One of the suggestions from the master plan, which we've kind of worked with, was this new traffic committee that the select board is working on and really focusing on the center of the town. And one of the recommendations from the master plan is to basically straighten out 140. And this, we basically, instead of that hard right-left churn, I'm sorry, left-right churn that is there now. This is one component of the master plan. And I think when we look at it and implementing it, we basically need someone, a champion of the master plan to basically divide up the work amongst the committees in town. And I am committed to ensuring that that happens and we take that out and we basically get the master plan starting to implement the things that we can implement. You're my time.
Thank you. Ms. Luciano. The town has invested two years of staff time, community feedback and commitment to the current master plan, which we are discussing. Unfortunately, past experience indicates that these planning documents are greeted with enthusiasm and then languish on a shelf. If elected, what steps will you take to ensure this document becomes the basis of Norton's future?
Thank you, Dinah. So the master plan is something that the townspeople have spoken and have decided what they want the town of Norton to look like into the future. And so I feel like every decision that comes before the select board should be viewed through that lens and how does it fit into the master plan? Our resources should be deployed based on the master plan. Our funding should be aligned with the master plan and we should be talking to the boards and committees about how we can help, how they can help us to get the town moving towards facilitating a town that looks more like the master plan and the things that we've identified in the master plan. I think that we should get that going as soon as possible. It's been sitting already for a couple of years, I think. And I think that that is something that we should be aggressively looking at going forward, each and every, I think that comes before the select board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tool, you have one minute for rebuttal?
I think Ms. Luciano is a little, first of all, the master plan was accepted last year and we're just in that first whole year when it was accepted. I don't think, the select board can't just say everything has to be based on that master plan. We live in the real world. I think it's, I think it's ideal that the master plan, we make decisions, big decisions based on the master plan, specifically the finances and so forth. But we can't just live in a vacuum and make all decisions based on our master plan. It is, it is a working document and breathing document that goes into, that we will work and implement and we will basically don't even really know all the action items that come out of that. And that's the first step is the action items and creating committees to identify the action items. Thank you, Madam.
Okay. Ms. Luciano.
The master plan is pretty detailed and has different sections for each area of the town. And so I think that we can work towards that immediately and start assigning those tasks to the boards committees that are appropriate for them and also reviewing things that come before the town with that lens of the master plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Luciano, this question is for you.
Okay.
Unless there is an override or similar large topic draw, town meeting continues to attract a dismally small percentage of voters to approve budgets close to $100 million. We have tried switching the days of the meeting, the time, the site, making it indoors and outdoors, getting more information available, but the chairs remain empty. Do you have any plans on how to involve more people in town meeting or is this just the way it's going to be?
It's a great question, Dinah, thank you. So this works into my, one of my goals is try to inspire people, right? To get more involved, to get more informed, to understand better how our town government works. And so one of the things that I plan to do initially if I become a select board member is to reach out to the townspeople and find out how can we help you to become better informed citizens of the town of Norton? Because the more you become engaged, the more you will naturally want to go participate in the town government. And so, as you mentioned, moving the town meeting to different times and dates has not been successful. I think there has been some effort in trying to make information more available, but I think we could do a better job of that. I also feel like, excuse me, that we can have some education on how the town meeting works, how you can amend articles on the floor, how you can move articles, how you can even draft bylaws. So I think that we could have some information sessions to help people understand how this form of town government actually works so they can come to the meeting feeling ready and prepared and better informed on the process of the town meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Tool. Unless there is an override or similar large draw topic, town meeting continues to attract a dismally small percentage of voters to approve budgets close to $100 million. We have tried switching the days of the meeting, the time, the site, making it indoors or outdoors, getting more information out to the public, but the chairs remain empty. Do you have any plans on how to involve more people in town meeting or is this just the way it's going to be?
It's a great question and I, you know, we hear this about the elections as well. It's, you know, voters, as the moderator alluded to, said, voters show up to issues that matter to them. If it's an override, it's a debt exclusion. We average about 180 to 100 people at town meeting out of the 14,000 registered voters. These are things that, I think a lot of people watch this on, watch it on a distance, but they just don't want to, they don't want to come. I think that one of the ways that we can overcome this is just change the way the communications go. You know, try to, try to get, figure out ways to find out what, inform them of what's on the warrant on these issues. But people show up to things they want. We see this in our town elections as well. On the general election, we get 10,000 people to show up. On the town election, we get, we get under 2,000 to show up. You know, and it's, I don't get frustrated by this. I would love to see 100% attendance. I think people show up to things that are important to them and even though I think this is, this is why we get elected, to represent the town and the residents and if we're not doing our job if elected, they will come and remove us. There's no doubt about that. So we have to trust that the process is working and figure out ways to improve communication, encourage people to show up. But I think, I don't want to get too upset and make, change the whole ship's direction of the town just to get people to town meeting. I think that's a bad, bad use of resources. So I think part of it is educating, communicating and trying to reach out to people and try to invite them. If they don't show up, that's understood. And, you know, we are lucky to have a full board, a full board for the three elected positions, or more than three elections, but for school committee, planning board, actually planning board is missing a seat, and the select board. But I think we encourage these, we encourage residents to show up, educate them on the warrant, educate them on town meeting. A lot of times people are overwhelmed on how a town meeting runs. So that's, that's what I would do. I mean, I think I would probably more market towards the town residents, use the reverse notification system, encourage the town manager to get more communication, almost like the superintendent does of a weekly letter. And that, those are things that I want to see happen if I'm reelected.
Thank you. Ms. Luciano, you have one minute for rebuttal.
Thank you. I would disagree with the fact that Mr. Tool said it would be a bad use of our time to spend a lot of effort in getting people to the town meetings to vote. I think it actually would be a fantastic use of our time because this is your government, your town and you should be invested and want to see the best decisions made on behalf of the town. And so I think if we educate the folks on how to understand the articles, how to move the articles, how to modify the articles and educate them in advance as about what the impact of those articles are, hopefully we can inspire some people to get more involved and get more active in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Tool.
So again, I mean, you know, we have, as a select board member, we take on a lot of responsibilities. We've already talked about implementing the master plan, working with committees. I serve on the opioid task force in town. We have a lot of things going on in town. I do think it does require some effort, but all efforts can't be to get people to town meeting. This town, as the moderator said, has an $80 to $100 million budget. We need to make sure that we're managing that money responsibly and just using efforts to, using all of our efforts to get people to town meeting. I think that's just a bad resource of resource of time. I would love to see everyone come and I invite everyone come, but I think there are simple things we can do to increase involvement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tool, this question is for you. Am I right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And on this question, the community is looking for specifics. In regard to the municipal budget, the town has pending changes to the highway department as well as two new buildings coming online. These will require a fresh look at the operating budgets and appropriations. Bearing in mind that Norton's population, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, is 17% under the age of 18, that is school-aged children, and 15.7% over the age of 65, our senior population. Please share how you will address these changes, which budgets should increase as a result and which, if any, should remain steady.
Save the, you save the old time question for now. No, this is a great question and this is the challenge question of the select board, the school committee and everyone in town, the finance committee in town. And it is absolutely right. We've seen our population within our students in 2000, our population was 3,000 students and now we're seeing it approach 2,000 students. We've seen our senior population increasing, increasing as well. And one of the things that we haven't seen is certain town services keep pace with certain other budgets. And so how do we manage, how do we manage these budgets? I think one of the ways that I proposed was in the last town meeting, or actually the Springtown meeting last year, was the DPW, combining two departments to hopefully optimize services, equipment and save money. We're going to see, that will be on the ballot this April as well and I would encourage every resident to vote for the inclusion and the combining of the DPW on the water department. Specifically on the budget on the council of aging and schools, I think, you know, I'm very careful, we can make recommendations to, we have a finance committee that works very hard and balancing that, making sure that the money is being spent appropriately. But I think the select board needs to give guidance and get more involved within the budget before it even gets to the finance committee. We have to basically, one of the things I talked about was a budget prioritization, well, a select board prioritization process for the budget. The select board needs to set its priorities. Since I've been on here and from what I've seen of the previous years before, while observing the select board, the select board's never done this and told the manager, this is where, town manager, this is where we need to be spending money. And that's where, one of the things that I think is going to be, one of the things that how we address some of these issues is select board addressing prioritization of the town budget and setting those goals. I think looking for opportunities of combining different departments like the DPW or the water department. I think we're going to see an increase. I think we have to make sure that our council of aging is, their budget of aging is, their budget is increasing at a reasonable rate. And we have to basically work, the select board needs to work with the school committee and the superintendent to address the declining student population, but the ever-growing school budget. It's, you know, I'm not an expert within education, I've never been a superintendent, I don't do this, but when I look at the numbers, I'm wondering if it's being optimized instead of we're just seeing increases. And these are the questions, I've been criticized by my opponent supporters for asking these hard questions, but it's not going to stop me from asking them.
Thank you, Mr. Tool.
Thank you.
Ms. Luciano.
Hi. Can you meet up against her?
In regard to the municipal budget, the town has pending changes to the highway department as well as two new buildings coming online. These will require a fresh look at the operating budget and appropriations. Bearing in mind that Norton's population, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, is 17% under the age of 18, or school-aged children, and 15.7% over the age of 65, the senior population, please share how you will address these changes, which budgets should increase as a result, and which, if any, should remain steady?
Great question. Thanks, Dinah. So I do think that we could find some synergies, and I think the idea of a DPW is not something new, it's been in existence, I think, for many, many years. People have been talking about the idea of a DPW, and I think that there are some synergies that we could find there, possibly some synergies within some of the other departments as well, that we could share some resources and find some synergies and save some money. I also think that there are a lot of new mandates that are coming from the state for the school system. I think we need to address at the state level with our representatives and with the, you know, the state boards and stuff that oversee education, and try to see if we can get the formulations addressed and buttoned up in providing us the proper funding that we need for the students that come into our community as either school choice or making it a more equitable financial solution if we, if our students go out of town or leave to go to other schools in town. And so those are some of the things that I think we could do. I also think that, for sure, we could spend some more, more money in council on aging. I think we could also look at, the school program has, the school, high school has a volunteer requirement for all of the high school students. I think we could do a better job of communicating and utilizing those high school students to help facilitate and run some of the programs, perhaps from the council of aging and some of the other areas in town, to help cheer up those areas and provide some additional programming for the council on aging department. So I hope to look more in depth into the budget, but the FinCom does an excellent job today about overseeing it and asking the great questions that we need to have asked of the, of the school budget, of the budget in general. And so I do think that we could find some synergies within the town to help save some funding.
Thank you. Mr. Tool, you have one minute for rebuttal.
Thank you. Ms. Luciano talked about restructuring chapter 70 funding. If that can be done that easily, people would have done it. It's one of the hardest things to do. And, you know, I think, I think she's absolutely right, we should put pressure on our legislators, but usually we don't see relief from that. What I do, what I am concerned about is the 17% number of our student population, but the town budget represents close to 70%. And the council of aging represents 15% of our population, and last couple of years, it's been about, their budget's been about $200,000. So, which is a comparison of 33 million versus 200,000. You know, I don't, I know this is comparing apples to oranges, but there has to be some equity in town budgeting, and I think it's, you know, tough decisions have to be made. I understand there are mandates in police, fire, school, water. Well, there are things that we, there are tough decisions that need to be made, and we have to make them as a select board, and I'm going to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Luciano.
I think you're correct, it is apples and oranges. I think that you could compare the needs of a student in the school age, in the system, to the needs of the programming for the council on aging. I do think that council of aging does need some increased funding, however, I think that the needs for educating our students and providing a good environment for them to learn is extremely important. I'm not in favor of increasing class size at the stake of saving some money here.
Thank you. Ms. Luciano, this question is for you. Please share your method of ensuring teamwork and collaboration between the select board, school committee, other elected and/or appointed boards, and residents of our community in order to achieve open communication and a mutually beneficial future for our town. What roles do you envision all of the above-mentioned boards and committees have in implementing our master plan?
Thanks, Dinah. I think that all those boards that you mentioned play instrumental roles in implementing our master plan. The way I plan to help to facilitate better communication between those boards is to ensure that we have more regular meetings between, shared amongst the boards, and to make sure that we're understanding and actually hearing each other to listen, not just listening to respond back. So I think we have to be open to differences of opinion, I think we have to be open to input from all areas, and I think that we have to be respectful of where, the position that those people are coming from when they come to the table. So understanding that they are coming from a different position, they have a role and responsibility that they are upholding, and understanding that as I'm listening to them, I think is instrumental, and it shouldn't be antagonistic, it shouldn't be attacking, it should just be in a listening mode and a collegiate discussion and strategic discussion amongst those boards together.
Mr. Tool. Please share your method of ensuring teamwork and collaboration between the select board, school committee, and other elected and/or appointed boards, and residents of our community in order to achieve open communications and mutually beneficial future for our town. What roles do you envision for all of the above-mentioned boards and committees having in implementing our master plan?
So, thank you, Madam Moderator. As I've talked about several times about the strategic master plan, this is, this document is so valuable in our town, and the key thing that we have to do is we have to figure out what the benchmarks and what the goals are, and we have to assign this to the committees. And I think that's one of the key things with the select board, with the planning, with the finance committee, with the school committee, individuals, each one of those are represented. Once we figure out then what the benchmarks are and we break up the work, then we can collaboratively work on these projects together and figure out what the funding mechanisms are. We do this, we do this process, it's a little different, but we do this process in our capital improvement plans. When we basically get together and we have representatives from each of these, from each of the committees, and we basically look at that, look at the different proposals, and we decide if there's any extra cash within the, if there's any cash within the capital or the stabilization account, we basically look to fund that. So this is one of the things that I would say that we have to do is first, look and basically appoint someone to lead this multi-effort committee, and then set the benchmarks, and then individually, the committees will pull together and figure out what prioritize, what's important, what needs to be funded immediately, and that's how we're going to achieve this. You know, without a direction and pulling committee together, I think we'll just kind of spin there, it would just spin there, and then the committee would die. If we see action, and we see movement, and we have directions, that's what's going to get the master plan rolling and working for the town and working for every resident.
Thank you. Ms. Luciano, will you have a minute?
Focusing on the subject of the question, which is just getting the committees to work together, the FinCom, the school committee, and the select board, I believe that was the three that were mentioned, I think that they have improved over the last several years in having those joint committee meetings. I'd like to see that continue and to see that continue on into the future and to hopefully be more fruitful in the future as well.
Mr. Tool, you have a minute.
I would actually agree with that. I think it is good to have the committees meet together, but one of the things that we fell into last year was the agenda and this. I think the master plan really livened these meetings up, and we have serious discussions to implement the master plan. If you've attended these meetings before, it's just kind of, you know, we've talked about, we've talked about subjects, but it wasn't really a direction. So I think getting all the committees together, but we have to do the pre-work, set the agenda and get the master plan rolling, and I think that will liven it up and get these committees working and get the meetings more fruitful.
Okay, thank you. And this will be our last question for the evening. And this is the time prior to your closing statement for shameless self-promotion. Mr. Tool, you've been running for quite a while now and presenting yourself to the voters to try to earn their support. But what can you tell the voters right now about yourself that they probably don't know, but probably should help them understand who you really are?
I have this raspy voice, I'm loud, I'm boisterous. You know, a lot of people just kind of jump to decision, assumptions about myself. I care for this town. The best thing about being a select board member isn't sitting at that table on Thursday night, it's the phone call I get when a resident calls me and is struggling with a problem. That's where I really, that's the pavement for this job. I really enjoy it. Constituent services, if I could figure out a way without running and do constituent services, I would. But, you know, I also enjoy the, working with the select board and setting the direction of the town. That's really what I would really enjoy the most and what I would want to, you know, it's why I put my cellphone out there, it's the reason why I put my email address out there. I'm an open book, and I invite you to call me if you're, if you're having problems within the town, I invite you to call me. I can't say I'll have a solution, but I'd love to try to figure out a way how I can help you, and that's really why, I don't bet that people don't realize that, that's what I really love about this job and about being a select board member.
Okay, Ms. Luciano.
Hi, Dinah. So focusing on the things that the town, that everyone doesn't know about me yet, I played the flute in marching band in high school. After high school, I played in a Portuguese band with my flute. I sing karaoke very badly. I sing in the car and embarrass my children every chance I can. And I am a proud nerd. And I, I spend my time devoted to my family first and foremost, but also loving my community and wanting to be part of it in any way that I can. I don't think there's been a day that's gone by since I've lived here that I haven't volunteered in some capacity throughout the town. And so this is just the next, natural step for me, and so I look forward to representing you hopefully following April 29th.
Okay, Mr. Tool, one more thing that you may have forgotten to include?
Yeah, well, like you said, I'm, you know, more purse, on a personal note, I have two children that were educated in Norton School Systems. My oldest daughter is a freshman at Elon University, and my son is a freshman at Norton High School. They really are my life, and it's really, I've enjoyed spending time with them, coaching, coaching them, being on boards of sports that they do, and just returning time to my community. Served as a deacon in my church, I've also served as a, I serve as a justice of the peace. And, you know, this last year, I've done about 25 weddings. And so it's, you know, most, a lot of these people are in town, you know, there's a lot of things that people don't realize about me, but I enjoy kind of getting people find love, if you will. And thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Luciano.
I guess the only thing I could add as far as the personal notes for myself would be that I surround myself with some of the best friends that I could possibly think of, both in town and from the town of Dyton where I grew up. They make me laugh, they make me better, and that some of them keep photos of my clumsy falls throughout the years as, as just fun fodder when we're together and we laugh on the fire pit. And so I thank all of them for their love and support, and thank them for lifting me up over the years, and appreciate them.
Okay, thank you. Well, we have reached the point in time for closing statements. Mr. Tool, who had the choice, has decided to go last. So Ms. Luciano, would you care to make your closing statement at this time?
Yeah, thank you for taking the time to watch this video, and I hope that everyone gets out there and votes April 29th at the Norton Middle School between the hours of 8:00 and 3:00, or if you can't make it that day, I know we all have busy schedules, busy lives, please reach out to Lucia Longhurst for an application for an absentee ballot or a mail-in ballot as well. And so those should be available soon. You won't get a picture posing or a handshaking politician with me, I'm not asking to be a select board member for the spotlight or attention. I'm standing here asking for your vote because I truly care about our wonderful community and want to see it do well into the future. If you want someone who means what they say and says what they mean, please vote for me, April 29th, Denise Luciano. And if you want some additional information about me, you can find more information about me on Vote For Denise Luciano Norton Select Board on Facebook.
Thank you. Mr. Tool.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Residents, tonight, you've seen due to two different perspectives from two different candidates, and I hope that I've earned your vote on the April 29th election. If you're still undecided, I would encourage you to check out my website at votetool.com, or just look at my work over the last three years. You will see several constants. First, I'm present. From select board meetings to town events, to fighting for residents on issues that matter, I'm always there and ready to answer the call. Next vision, I see the greatness in this town and feel my vision can work hard to find creative ways to bring this town to the next level. Finally, openness. I will talk to any resident and listen to their challenges, no matter how they voted in the past, or even if they've shared different opinions. I represent everyone in this town. It doesn't matter if you're a school person or a no vote, I represent every resident. And this is how I've always served as a select board member. Especially, we're about to see some serious problems happen in town, and be actually approaching our town. We see increasing state mandates, we see a blooming tax, real estate tax bills for some, and we see general budget shortfalls due to lack of state funding. With all these challenges, this is my, this is why my personal, professional, and public experience has made me the best candidate for the select board. I will leave you with this thought. Being elected is easy, but serving is hard. My name is Michael Tool, and I'm a select board member, and I ask for your vote on April 29th. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you very much, Ms. Luciano. Mr. Tool.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you being here tonight and the debate that we have. So this concludes our debate for this evening, and again, I would like to thank our candidates, Norton Media Center, and all of you who are watching for your participation. Please remember to vote on Saturday, April 29th, from 8:00 to 3:00 at the Norton Middle School. You can also vote by mail and absentee ballot, and information concerning these is available on the town website, www.nortonma.org. There are other positions on the ballot that you need to be aware of, and I hope you take the time to find out about them. The select board has one seat for a three-year term. The Board of Assessors has one seat for a three-year term. They have one seat also for a two-year term. The Housing Authority has one seat for a five-year term. The Planning Board has one seat for a two-year term, and one, and two seats for three-year terms. The Moderator has one seat for a three-year term. The School Committee has one seat for a three-year term. And the Water Sewer Commissioners have one seat for a three-year term. This is an important election, and every vote counts. You have the opportunity to determine the direction of our hometown, and it's up to each and every one of us. Thank you for watching, and have a pleasant evening.